All right, we'll just get started.
Jonathan, she says the order on the agenda is correct. She's trying to figure out the audio.
Okay, fair enough. We'll get started then unless it well, yeah, real quickly. Does any board member have any questions about this before we get started?
You mean about the the this part right here?
Yeah, yeah, the process.
Oh, the process. Okay, okay, thank you.
Jonathan, do we need to approve the agenda?
Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna try to do that at the beginning of the previous training, but not everybody was even on audio, and so it didn't seem prudent. The it's probably a smart idea. It did not, due to the logistics of this, make the the agenda apologies for that, but we can do that right now. So if anybody has a request to amend the agenda, I would accept a motion before proceeding.
I move to approve the planned agenda as the accepted agenda.
So move, thank you.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion about tonight's agenda? Okay, Debbie, are you on audio now?
Am I back?
I can hear you.
Okay, Janet. Yes, Tom.
I.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes, thank you. All in favor?
Thank you. Thanks for the reminder as well, Jen. Okay, if there are no additional questions about the process, I'd like to jump right in. So just one more quick opportunity for any board member to ask questions about the process. All right, Jennifer, would you do me the favor, if you don't mind, of just keeping a rough three minutes? I'm not going to cut somebody off if they're at right at three, but just to keep us sort of in generally at about three minutes max.
I'll raise my fingers so you can see them.
Thank you much. All right, Erin, I think you're up first.
Well, good evening, members of the board and administration. I appreciate the time to come before you tonight. My name's Aaron Cook. And applying for the reinstatement for a second term here to the budget committee. I have three kids that are product of the Silver Falls School District, one graduate and two current, and it's really because of them and all the children, our children in our community that I really desire to serve on the district budget committee. And I simply want to help see to it that we provide the absolute best educational experience for each and every one of our students in the greater fall Silver Falls community. One of the qualifications that I do bring to the committee is that I've been an active and engaged parent in the district for the past nearly decade and a half. I volunteer in the schools and I've served on this very board for two years. I've served on the strategic vision and also the long range facility planning committees. And most currently I served as budget member of the past budget committee for the past three years and served as board chair, elected board chair for those three years. Through this service, I've gained a deep understanding of the district's history and of our budgeting principles and processes. And in the areas in which our district required continued improvement and continued investment. Another key qualification I possess is knowing how to work well on a team as a member of a committee. I understand how to help foster collaborative working environment in which all members' opinions are heard and valued and considered within the decision making process. Serving as budget committee chair for the past three years, I've helped facilitate our budget committee through, you know, a few tense moments and helped to facilitate the progress of of positive, efficient, orderly discussions ultimately leading to the ratification of our district budget. In my profession previously as a as a regional sales manager now as contract director, Johnson and Johnson Medical Devices, I understand about operating within resource constraints. While at the same time producing growth. Funding is a precious and finite resource, and I realize there there will always be trade offs and compromise within every budget. So as a budget committee member, my my goal and I'm a number one goal will be to help ensure that our finances are invested properly as to maximize the character and academic growth of each and every one of our students. I appreciate this opportunity and again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Appreciate it. Anybody have any questions for Erin? Okay, well, we really appreciate the introduction. Thanks again. Right, I believe next up is Matthew Gatlin or Ga- Gaetan. I'm sorry, I misread him when it's small type on my screen.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Jonathan. Yeah, just log me out, log me back in again. It's good to be seeing everyone this evening, and I appreciate the consideration for volunteering for this budget committee position. I've been in Silverton for the past five years. I have two children, son and a daughter, five and eight in the Silver Falls School District. And I am a Latino, second generation Colombian. I speak fluent Spanish and, you know, I understand that, you know, there's a large amount of Latinos in the in the school district, and I want to be able to hear their voice and make sure that they are represented in in decisions when it comes to how budgeting is taken care of. You know, I I've seen what's what's happened in terms of the way the world's changed with COVID and everything, and it really has affected me in terms of, you know, how my child now needs to learn. I see that, you know, there's some kids out there that really struggle with the language barrier, and and I've reached out directly to my daughter's teacher to volunteer and help any way I can for those students that the the video plus just the lack of engagement is really tough. So I'm sorry about I've got a motion light in here. So I've been I began to do that, and, you know, last year I signed up to be a literally coach because, you know, development of kids outside of school is also super important, and that obviously got put on hold. So, you know, try and find the best way to just contribute to the community. I really love living here and want to give back professionally. I have been in software sales and language translation services for the past 14 or 15 years and own in profit and loss statements in terms of, you know, how to how to operate a business successfully. Everywhere from Fortune 500 companies down to smaller organizations and, you know, fiduciary fiduciary responsibility is so key in business as as I know in this role as well. Always keeping in mind, you know, the the well being and education of the children at at whole. So, you know, that that's how I would operate on with a very keen eye on how every single dollar is spent. And, you know, I very much appreciate the the consideration for for this potential position.
Thank you, Matt. Really appreciate it. Yes, Jennifer.
Matt, can you pronounce your last name for us so that we don't continue to mispronounce it?
Sure thing. It's Guyton.
Guyton?
Thank you.
Sure thing.
Any other questions for Matt?
I just wanted to say thank you for volunteering to put in your application to be on the board. On the on the board on the budget committee. So thank you for sharing your your story with us.
Appreciate it, Shelley. It's my pleasure.
All right. Well, thanks, Matt. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Next up, we have Astrid Potter.
You hear me?
Dan.
Okay, sorry about that. As soon as it's as soon as it switched over. Redid the meeting, restarted the meeting. So I don't know if that's a part of how this webinar system works or not. Anyway, thank you for inviting me to to introduce myself tonight. My name's Astrid Potter, and I am the parent of a sixth grader at SMS. And I am a member of the board at Community Root School. I spent my career in state service, mostly with Departments of Transportation and Engineering and Contract Administration. My work generally focuses on managing the budget for multi-million dollar construction contracts, negotiating contract changes and interpreting contract language. All of this as on a as a team. And in at some points in time as leadership of that team currently as a member. In my personal community service, I volunteered with organizations and hands on capacities in the past. And I entered leadership and community service with the Facilities Community Committee at Community Root School. And I've been doing that for the past five years and the board at Community Root School for the past four years. With the Facilities Committee, I worked on the design of the facilities to meet the needs of the student and staff within the limitations of the buildings and land that was available to us, as well as drafting and negotiating contract leases or lease contracts. With the board, I've also been involved or led some of the hiring committees. Revisions to the fiscal procedures and policy manual and kind of anything else that was needed. I I've applied to join Budget Committee with the district to offer really my detail orientation and risk reward analysis abilities to the district, staff and students. And to continue my growth in community service leadership. So thank you for your time and consideration, and can I answer any other questions that you may have for me?
Anybody have any questions for Astrid?
I just have one quick clarification. I'm sorry. Did you say that you were on the Board of Directors of Community Roots?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay, since 2016?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe I've got one year left in my term, and then I was going to resign after this term.
Great, okay. Thank you for that clarification. And thank you for coming.
Okay, well, thank you again. We really appreciate you guys making the time to do this. It's a very helpful task.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Astrid. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Matt Plummer.
Matt hasn't shown up. So Samuel Moser is next on the list.
Okay, well, we'll go to Samuel.
Can you hear hear me now?
Indeed.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time. I am a father of four children in the Silver Falls School District here. I I have an endeavor to help the community and 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 work with the the local families and and the board to to support the the school systems with a limited budget that we see coming here currently. My profession is in engineering, but I lead a team of about 60 people. And I'm responsible for $10 million in budget there. Which I feel there's always negotiation and in in working together as a team on on what we all all believe in is the care for our kids and the education of our kids. And I I come in here, there's three very qualified people before me there. So you you have a number of people here to choose from. I think I think we all care for our kids here. Just want to add to the community if I can and look to volunteer there. I do also manage a nonprofit in the local community for the the poor and needy as well. So.
Wonderful.
So if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Well, I think we should appoint you right now just for the very background that you have in your picture. The beach and the ocean. It's beautiful. Thank you for coming. It was nice to hear from you and put a face to a name. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, any any additional questions for Sam or Samuel? Sorry.
Sam is fine.
Well, again, we really appreciate you guys making the time to do this. It just sort of puts an extra element to, you know, rather than just a an application, we kind of have a face that we're putting to it and a personality to go along with it, and it just really is helpful, and I appreciate it.
Jonathan?
Yes.
So Matt's been on the meeting the whole time. I don't see him, and neither does Maddie, but he's gonna log off and try to get back on, but he's been listening the whole time. We don't know what happened here.
Is it is it the name Sarah DeSantis?
Um, no, he said he came in under his name.
Well, Sarah DeSantis has been here the whole time and just got off and rejoined. So.
Okay, I'll find out. I told her he's gonna hang up and try again, so.
Let's just give a minute here while he tries to get joined back in. And then while while he's doing that, I'll take a moment to just remind the rest of the board that we're gonna try to do the vote then in our regular December meeting. That's our is to appoint at the next meeting, which would give us the opportunity, you know, we've had the introduction now. So we would be doing the the actual voting coming up in December. Yes, Jennifer.
I know that, you know, our policies under revision and we're working under our current policy, which has some specifications that aren't necessarily, you can't always get them all aligned. And so I think it's super important that when we do vote at the next meeting that we explain our priorities and align them to language in the policy or other language, just so that we're really transparent, because in years past, there's been, you know, concerns from the public that this process wasn't transparent. And so I just want to encourage folks to be expressive and specific.
Really good reminder.
Matt is in the meeting.
All right. Hi, Matt.
Hello. Apologies for that. Forgot that my wife was the last zoomer on here, and so it was under her name. So. So hello, good evening. I'm Matt Plummer, here to show off my technical skills more than anything. And that's the main takeaway, but, you know, mostly husband, father of two. I guess coming at this from a different angle, we have two boys that are soon to enter the school district. One is turning five this week, so will be in kindergarten this coming fall somewhere. I guess we'll see what what you decide for that one. And then our youngest boy is two, so not long behind him. And so know that, yeah, there's a lot of changes going on with the school districts. You know, I'm not here to woo anybody with my my budget experience, but more so with just critical thinking. I've gone through many budget processes. I know that you have staff that is really good at the process of creating a budget, so more than happy to leave that in their hands. But, you know, as a parent, as a community member, you know, that's the perspective that I want to bring forward. Currently, I'm serving on city council, so this is I am nearing my last month of the four year term with that and just deciding that I want to shift gears and focus more on the school district and schools and and just family and and kind of what the road ahead is there. Community service is a big part of our whole family's life. And, you know, want to be involved in some capacity and think with my experience with the city through the the budget and a creation, discussion, approval and implementation of that budget, you know, have a lot to offer there. I have been a small business owner. I was a college instructor and professor for just over a decade over in central Oregon, and then most recently University of Portland, and that allowed me some time to actually do some subbing in Silver Falls School District when the the college term ended early and there was still some time to to get in the schools and affect, you know, a different age. I've spent many years mentoring college students at OSU. So, you know, have that kind of coming out of the school system and and entering the the university college age perspective and, you know, have had many conversations about what experience they had grown going through their own school district. Following my education, I guess portion of my career got into risk management, was with Marion County for quite a few years, operating a large budget there. Have since moved on to safety consultation for a large workers comp insurer here in the state. And that's allowed me to to work with a lot of school districts around the state from the the risk management capacity. So, you know, I've worked a lot of different jobs, a lot of different industries. My background is in health and human performance. That's what I was teaching, you know, father, business owner. And yeah, I just think that I have a variety of aspects or variety of perspectives to to bring forward. And, you know, that plus lived all over the country, you know, born in Maine High School in Alaska, college all over the Northwest. And more than anything, just want to be involved, get better acquainted with the district. You know, because we're we've got a long relationship ahead of us and just want to be involved in some capacity and think that this would be the best capacity for me at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions for Matt? Okay, really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for coming and applying for the Budget Committee and being here. Thank you.
Of course. Thank all of you for serving.
Thank you, Matt.
All right. Well, yes, Janet.
There we go. Sorry. Quick question. Are we considering zones at all in in our review of the candidates? I seem to remember us doing that at one point because we wanted a good representation of different areas, but I haven't seen any information on the different zones. Is that something we're including in our our sort of scoring matrix or our internal calculus of who we're choosing?
I I think that's something that anybody can choose to consider, right? I don't think it's Debbie has
I don't think it's in our policy.
Has a great, I don't think you guys that have been working on the policy, I don't think it actually mentions zones, does it? I don't I don't believe it did.
No, it just it talks about recruiting from a diverse geographical area, and in the past that has been considered. And, you know, I I think that if the majority of board members want to have that information, we can ask Debbie to do that.
Right.
Somebody wants to make a motion, that would be great.
I'd like to mention something. I know that Debbie has done that in the past. Do you remember when we would receive the maps that she gave us that had? They were beautiful. They were really big maps, and she had the names marked out and lined out of where everybody lived in the district. And I think that was very, very helpful in determining or in in actually analyzing the applicants and and what we needed. And so yeah, I've even gotten out those maps before last year again, and I I mean, I know it's I don't know how much work it is, but it it's just really nice to have, just so we're so transparent, we can really just, you know, do our job well. So just wanted to mention that.
I can take care of that, and I'll get it to the to the group, hopefully maybe by the beginning of next week.
That'd be really helpful.
Sure. Yeah, I was wondering, are are we going to? I know the the Policy Committee is working on a matrix for this, if I'm not mistaken. That still has to come forward, doesn't it? I mean, I know that Tom and Shelley are also on the committee. And I can't quite recall offhand if that's on the matrix.
Well, as you know, we're developing a matrix as a supplemental piece to the policy. It's not it's not written.
Okay, very good.
Help to steer the conversation, but at the end of the day, each board member's entitled to to their vote and so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And
Did I capture that right?
Yeah, I think so. I think, you know, in addition to that, I think we can also say that we're we haven't changed really the the major substance of the policy. I think we've we've kind of added in some some you know, language in there that we listened to the rest of you, the rest of the board members when we were talking about it. And it's it's almost the matrix that we have is representative of a broad spectrum of what we should be looking at as a board to appoint the best people onto our Budget Committee. And so we've done, we're really, we've come a long way on that, and I I mean, I'd like to mention that we've come so far that, you know, I think we're almost even ready to bring that policy and that matrix and such to the board, actually on December night for our first reading or our meeting in December, I think it's December night. Um, and I don't know, I just, I feel like we're so close that I was wondering if, you know, I mean, this just came up in my head, but I was wondering if maybe it would be best if we appointed our board members, maybe in January, or I keep saying board members. Our Budget Committee members, maybe in January and February, after we get that new policy and matrix adopted, I really I I don't know, I the excitement that was happening in the policy work group from Lori and Tom and myself and the workers, we think you're really gonna like it. We worked really hard on it, so I think it would be really fantastic if we could possibly do that. So I don't know, I'm just out there. So just now.
Yes, Jennifer.
I just want to say that the reason why we put this on the agenda is because there was some board members expressed a sense of urgency to get this done before Christmas. And so I guess I'm wondering about the change, like it to me, yeah, I don't know. I just I just wonder about the change.
So that's a good thought. I I didn't think honestly, working in the policy work group, that we would get this far on the on the on the Budget Committee policy. So, I mean, we couldn't foretell what we were going to be doing at this time way back in beginning of October. So but we've come a long way, and it's, I don't know, it's it's pretty great. I we'd love to show it to you. Tom, do you have anything to say about how happy you were in the policy work group?
Yeah, it's 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 coming along fine. I guess to go back to to go back to Janet's question. The current policy and the are what we're discussing now as far as the question about location, I think that both policy I, I think that both pol- the current policy and, and what we're talking about, both refer to location or geographic location, place of residence, something like that within the district. Um, and I don't think that the, the new policy is going to, it's just going to spell out a little bit clear what our current policy is, is doing. So to the, um, so I don't think we're going to see a big market, a big difference. And it's just gonna, I think, you know, if the, i- if we come up, if the board approves a, a new policy, that it'll just, it'll make people's, yeah, it'll be more transparent to the public what each board member was thinking as they, as they made their Budget Committee selection. So, I mean, I don't see there, there's not any major changes as I see it currently, but it's just more clear. So, um, yeah, I like it. I, I, I like to, you know, I like what we're doing in the policy group on this. And I really like these, um, like these Budget Committee applicants.
Yeah, Tom, your point, um, I agree with you. What I like about this matrix is that it's a lot cleaner and all the information is just laid out. And I, I think it would be a nice contribution.
Yeah, I mean, we can use the spirit, we can use this, you know, that information will be on our first draft. I, I, I think we should continue to appoint the, the Budget Committee members in December. But we'll have the, I think, if, if it goes through committee, if, I think the information from the committee will still be in front of us board members in our first draft reading, and we can use the spirit of, 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 of the new documents, you know, as each board member wish chooses. But we, but we kind of chose a while back to, you know, continue to with, um, seat the board members or select, selective board members at, at our, at our, at our December meeting. And I, I see no new information that makes me think that, that we should change that path.
Thank you, Tom. So for everybody's sake, one of the reasons that we are trying to get this done is primarily because in following policy, we were actually supposed to have done this. I believe it stipulates to try to do it by the, is it the August meeting? I'm trying to remember. I don't, I don't have it up in front of me and I didn't refresh that for detail, but we are trying to get this done as soon as possible per that. It's been delayed a few times for a variety of different reasons, enough, at least of which has been COVID and forest fires and lack of applicants. I mean, there's all these different things going on. But regardless of that, given that, you know, policy calls for us to have already done it, I think we ought to proceed in December unless somebody would, you know, make a motion and the board would agree to specifically postpone it far enough and out to try to move forward with this new policy, which presuming it goes through with flying colors, which given what you all three said seems reasonable. But then again, it still needs a first and second reading and then to get formally voted on. And so, you know, we could easily be, as Shelley alluded, January, maybe into February before we'd be able to appoint the Budget Committee at that.
Jonathan, it may, I'll just offer if I may, um, that the matrix is really a supplemental piece to the policy. And, you know, um, I think it's, it's pretty much well drafted at this point. And if, if you all, I'm just, this is just a thought, if you all would like to see it at the next, uh, board meeting, we can certainly show that to you. We could get, of course, get it to you beforehand. Um, uh, maybe that could be a discussion item. I, you know, it's, it's really good work and it's, it's, um, it's just to be able to support our board members in making their decision. But again, I just wanted to offer that. It, you know, um, I agree, we have to get, we have to move forward on this. But if that might assist the board.
Thank you. If it's, one second, if it's supplemental and doesn't conflict in any way with the existing policy, then there's absolutely no reason not to consider using, um, with regard to the upcoming voting in December. At least that's my two cents. Good.
Um, I just wonder if it needs board action at all. I wonder if you could just send it out and people could choose to use it or not use it.
I agree. I don't believe it probably does need any board action because it's, as stated, is supplemental. And doesn't, if it doesn't conflict, then it's supplemental. I don't think we need to take action.
And I. Go ahead.
Sorry, Shelley.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we'd be happy to, to get that to you all.
Great.
And I just want to say that I agree with Scott. Um, he gave a great explanation just a minute ago. Um, and I think, you know, um, that was probably what I was trying to say was, you know, um, the matrix is so great. It, it's just, um, and we'd love for you to see it and maybe use it in the spirit of, of appointing our Budget Committee members this year. So, um, yeah, I thank you, Scott, for offering it out to them and having them marinate, you know, all of that information for a little bit. Um, and then, yeah.
And, and thank you, Scott, again for that. I, I think it'd be wonderful if the boards at least had that presented to them and had access.
And we'd be happy to send that to you. It's, it's really straightforward as well. And so if, if it helps, great. Be happy to send it.
Hey, Jennifer. Um, I also think that it will help. I know in the past years that we've, um, I mean, you've mentioned this before and that's always stuck in the back of my head, that there's been some, you know, language in our policy that kind of has been conflicting with our public. Um, and I hope that this particular document, um, will help alleviate a lot of those frustrations. Um, and the lens that we used, um, creating that document, um, we took from that portion of the policy. Um, and really kind of expanded on it and made it far more clear. Um, so it, it will have, you know, so it, it's a, it's a better document, um, to be able to say, you know, this is what we used and, and this is the level of integrity that we're going to use this document for. And, and we're good to go. So I hope, I hope you guys like it. So I just wanted to mention that to you.
And, and I do, I'm just wondering if, um, that needs to be part of the board packet if it's distributed. I don't know if it is, does or not, but it's just.
Anything different or new to add to this?
I must be lagging or Jonathan's lagging.
I think Jonathan is, he's frozen.
Yep. I think I'm just coming back. You guys just all of a sudden refreshed, so.
So my wondering, based on, you know, what Shelley said, it sparked an, an idea. Like, I don't know if, like, say that, you know, Scott just sends out the, the matrix to board members. We should probably attach it to the agenda, not necessarily because it requires action, but just as, um, a transparency piece.
Right.
And it might be worthwhile to send it to the applicant so they know the tool, the, those who spoke this evening, they know the tool that's being used. In addition to posting it on Board Book, I think would be worthwhile. So people kind of know what their, what the lens, and I think it will help you as board members come, uh, in December, you know, to kind of already filtered through processes and have a tool to use to, when you come to, to make your, um, to do your vote for that. So I think it's a worthwhile tool and a good suggestion and could help, you know, give feedback for the policy group too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a great.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Good point.
Okay.
Right.
Anything further before we move to the next topic? All right. So next up, I believe Scott, you were going to present some information on hiring practice. You're muted, Scott.
Oh.
I think that's going to be the new catchphrase for 2020.
Quote of the year, yeah.
Um, so I just want to take a, a little bit of time during the work session just to talk to you a little bit about the direction we're taking with leadership selection going forward. Um, in, in Silver Falls School District. And, you know, I, I think I've said this to, uh, many of you and, and many times, and that is that hiring is our, one of our most important responsibilities because it affects generations of kids. So, um, just like hiring teachers is of the utmost importance, hiring leaders is no exception to that. And I, I just want to share with you the thinking around why we're going in the direction that we are and why the selection process is set up the way that it is. Um, this happens to be a, a huge, uh, passion of mine and has been for about the past 10 years. And, and, um, I just want to walk you through a few of the reasons. Um, one is we know, we know through mountains of research, mostly from John Hattie's work, that the teacher's the most important factor in a child's academic achievement. But a very, very close second is the school leader. Um, and so we, we want to make sure that we're basing our process to select leaders off of research and off of best practice. And so, um, so I just want to share this real quick if I could. And can you see that? You see it? I can't hear them.
Yep, everybody can see it's.
Got it. So, um, we just want to make sure we're basing our practice off of research. And the other thing that we want to make sure that we're doing is connecting, um, our systems to the strategic plan. And we're in year two of five, and we want to make sure that we're taking a look at the three goals of the strategic plan and the indicators and the results indicators for success and making sure that those are congruent with, uh, the kind of the guiding principles of our, of our process. And so we have a, um, a systematic way that we're going to address this. And it all starts with, um, making sure that we are mitigating the risks. And with a selection process, that's what we want to do. We know that the decision that we always take on a, when we make a hiring decision is a little bit of a risk, but we want to make sure that the process that a candidate has to go through gives us the, the appropriate amount of observational data so that we can tie that to what we're looking for and to mitigate the risks and hopefully, um, increase the candidate's, uh, chances of success so that we can see the benefit of that, uh, in our students' learning. So the first step is that we've established timelines. And so our timelines right now have to do with a gathering input. Uh, we have three openings that we're hiring for, one at Silvercrest, one at Robert Frost and one at the high school. Um, and we're deep into gathering the input. We have met with the staffs of, of Robert Frost and Silvercrest. We just met with students of the high school today for an hour and received a lot of great feedback from them. And, uh, we are holding community town halls starting, uh, next week. Um, so on the first, we are having, um, community town halls for, for Robert Frost and Mark Twain because they share some, uh, the same attendance area right now. Um, and we will have the high school, um, on the third. So, uh, Robert Frost, uh, Mark Twain and Silvercrest on the first and then the third, um, for the high school. And those, um, invitations, uh, have gone out and the surveys will go out starting this Sunday uh, for additional feedback from the community. So, um, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Uh, but we just want to make sure that in our second step, we're determining what the leadership traits are of the candidates we're looking for. So just like in good teaching, you would start with the standard, the Common Core standard first, and then you'd take a look at how you're going to assess student learning towards that standard. And then you kind of backwards map your instruction from there. So we're taking a very similar approach to our selection process for leaders. Uh, we're making sure we base it on, on the current research, the strategic plan and stakeholder input. So we're really working on the third one right now. Um, the staff input sessions, these are huge. Um, and the community input sessions, the Silverton High School staff we meet with on the 30th, right, when we come back that Monday. Um, and that will conclude our staff input sessions. And then, of course, I just mentioned that, uh, that same week, we go into community forums for the other schools as well. So, um, we've also, again, sending out a survey so parents can give us their information uh, or their input as well, and we'll provide it at both the community forums as well. And so after that, we will take all of the input data and sort of combine it and start distilling it down into categories, if you will. So we come up with the leadership traits that we're looking for, and then we'll go back to the community of each school. Um, and we will share, uh, sort of the, the input that we gathered and that we had organized. Just want to make sure that the community knows, uh, that we're, we're taking their input very seriously and we're incorporating it into a process. Um, and so once we get that distilled down, we hope to have, you know, four, five or six leadership traits we're looking for so that we can then start to design the tasks that the candidates will have to go through during the process. And the document on the left is something I've used in the past that has guided hiring. Um, then whatever we come up here, um, once we crunch the data and the input, will look something uh, pretty similar in terms of format, you know, in terms of the leadership attribute and what that actually looks like. And then we can start, uh, aligning the, the writing tasks and the performance tasks that the candidates will have to go through. Um, and what we want is for a candidate in the process, once they enter our interview process, to be able to express their ideas in writing, uh, to be able to articulate their knowledge and instructional leadership, um, in their oral interviews. There'll be more than one interview there, um, to demonstrate their instructional leadership skills and performance tasks. And they'll have, then have to interact effectively with stakeholder groups. We have, um, an outline for that. And what we want to try to suss out in each of the stages is that they have an equitable, uh, they have a belief in equitable and universal access for kids. Um, and of course, engaging and empowering others is a huge part of being a school leader as well. So all of this, um, goes into designing the stages, and this is what the, um, the process will look like. This is a draft, but in my experience, it won't change much from this. And so we do have an eight-stage process that our leaders will have to pass in order to, for it to go to an offer, um, uh, to lead one of our school communities in the Silver Falls School District. And so going forward, we, uh, will post the position in mid-January for all three, uh, principalships. And then we will assemble the candidate pool. The candidates will have a chance to apply. Uh, we are also in the middle of identifying the teacher leaders within our district. One, so we know who our teacher leaders are. And two, we're identifying those who have an interest in administration. We want to make sure that we have an, uh, you know, conduit for developing our own leaders in-house. And we're also, uh, recruiting individuals to, um, to throw their hats in the ring in the candidate pool as well. And so what I've said many times is we recruit 24/7/365. We are always recruiting for this district. We may not even have openings, but we are always staying in contact with the talent in the state of Oregon because what we want is to be recruiting the top 1% of talent, um, uh, of administrators in, in the state. So we're all over the place right now, uh, talking to people. And, and, um, we do have, uh, a system for, for inviting, uh, candidates to come to Silver Falls, to learn about Silver Falls and to ask us questions, just like somebody in-house who's interested in the position will have as well. And so what these stages will look like is that stage one would be a writing assessment. The, the notes in parentheses are more for us, but there's a, there's a rhyme, a rhyme to the reason here. Um, the second stage, uh, would be the same day and it would be a screening interview. And that would constitute, uh, the first two stages to make our decision on the cut point. And those individuals that make it past that cut point would go to a longer interview with a performance task, which they'd be given a data set and, and a problem of practice that we'd want to see then presented back to us. That's also where staff of both school communities, uh, would have access, uh, to watching and giving their input. Uh, typically it's around stage three where things to get, things get pretty serious where, uh, uh, the candidates start to get weeded out, uh, their herd starts to get a little bit thinner at that point. And so then we want to start, um, making the best use of our staff's and stakeholders' time as we can. Um, that would be a second cut point after that. And then we go into what we are calling, uh, town halls. Um, one with the community, with administrators present, cabinet, Dan, myself, uh, our Director of Student Services, Director of Teaching and Learning and Director of Finance would be in those meetings. Um, and then stage five would be with the staff of the particular school with no administrators present. Administrators would come into the meeting to get the feedback from the staff that had spent the hour with the candidate. And so even though we don't vote on, um, who, uh, the finalist will be, we. we will take consensus from the staff very seriously. And to give you an example, I think it would be pretty hard for us to pass a staff member from stage five to stage six if we didn't have a general consensus of the staff about that candidate to be able to do that. So it's just another mechanism in place to make sure that we are taking the feedback from our community very seriously. And the third cut point would be the last one, and that's when we get into reference checks. We always save reference checks for the end because what we want to know is whether or not the information we get from the references lines up with the observational data we gather during the process. Because we're all under the assumption that a candidate would put down, of course, references that are positive and and for good reason. And we want to make sure that the same information that those references are telling us that we've actually seen that. And you'd be surprised. Normally, it lines up 100% and it's parallel, but every now and then there are huge gaps. And then we want to get to the bottom of that. Nobody's going to be able to talk their way into a leadership position in Silver Falls. That's for sure. The stage seven is the site visits. If we're out of COVID, of course, that's in in regular, normal times, if we could call it that. We would build that into the process. We'd have to think if there's an alternative activity that we can do for that. And then stage eight is a final interview with cabinet. And cabinet makes the final decision on all administrator hires. And what what I would say is I'm ultimately responsible. I understand it's it's a big decision to make and that that decision is ultimately mine. But I work in 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 not unilateral decisions that are very big. I would need to have the consensus of superintendent's cabinet to move forward on something like that. And I think, again, it just allows us to have shared decision-making as we go through the process. And what we want is for the candidate to interview us in each one of these stages, the same with the same intensity that we're interviewing them. And so that if we wind up to stage eight and it goes to an offer, they are very clear with what our expectations are of our leaders here, and they have had their questions answered. I suspect that we'll probably have, you know, in my experience, we'll probably have a candidate pool. Say if we post the high school of hopefully 25 or 30. I only expect a very small fraction of those to make it to the end. And that's just my own experience talking. And so it's more of a reason why we have a selection process set up the way that it is because we want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence along the way. And then, of course, the the final section to this would be the onboarding piece. And and that's stay tuned for that. So does the board have any questions that I can answer or comments? And I will exit out of this screen so I can see you. And again, just wanted to give you a generally, go ahead.
No, I was just asking, soliciting comments and questions.
It's I've never seen. Oh, sorry. It sounds wonderfully comprehensive. I I'm thrilled. It's great.
Thanks, Lori. Thank you.
So I've never seen anything so detailed about the hiring process to us. And I really appreciate your transparency on this, the process that you've implemented and that you're going to be doing. So this is just another step in a really good, healthy relationship amongst, you know, every, all the stakeholders in our district. And I really appreciate it, you bringing that forward and bringing it in public. So thank you. Well done.
Thanks, Shelley. Hey, Janet.
Thanks. I just wanted to update all of you. If you hadn't remembered, that that Scott has very generously invited Jennifer and I to meet with him weekly as he moves through this process. And so we've met twice now for over an hour on Friday afternoons. And it's just really been great. It's just been really interesting to see the process. We've had some opportunities to give some feedback, which was really valuable, and I really appreciated that. And so we continue, I won't speak for Jennifer, but I think I can say that we both really look forward to to watching this roll out and participating where we can and where it's appropriate and and bringing anything else back to the board that we need to. But yeah, just for for the for the public's information and for your information that that's what's happening. And it's a it's really great. And one thing that I mentioned when we met last time is what I really appreciate about all of Scott's processes, whether it be long-range facilities planning or or the hiring process. They 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 have very sort of parallel structures. And the processes themselves sort of all share the same commitments to the way they play out, even if the process itself has very different steps. And so I think having that in our district is just really valuable to have this sort of predictability and and transparency around how we do things, kind of regardless of what they are in particular. And so, yeah, so it's it's just been really fantastic.
Thanks, Jan.
Yes.
So I just, yeah, I agree with everything Janet said and wanted to express appreciation for everybody's role on whatever committee you're on, because I know that we are all doing stuff besides just these meetings. And so I also do appreciate it that, you know, not every step of this hiring process is going to be reported back to the board, but at least you know that there are representatives there, you know, participating. So I hope that that, you know, leaves people feeling confident, just as I feel confident because everybody else is, you know, is is working on on other things. So good work, team. Thanks, Scott, Dan, for distributing us throughout your your operations.
You know, Dan and I, Dan and I talk, say all the time how how proud we are of of our board that at the level of engagement, we have multiple work groups and we have a board sanctioned committee. Where the boundary work, we have the long-range facilities planning committee, we have a policy work group. The hiring work group is kind of more like an advisory group. It's it's getting the bouncing ideas off of Janet, Jennifer, and then hearing their feedback. And, you know, and it's it's more like a back and forth thought partner also. But we're just really, really pleased with the level of engagement of of the board. And and I hope you feel the same way as well. Tried to off provide these multiple ways to for you to engage and and in the SFEA communications meetings as well and our OSEA communications meetings. Those are just two additional ones. And and anyway, it's just, it's just really great. I'm just really thankful to to work with you all. One of the things that I wanted to mention about the hiring process is that even if we, when we do assemble the the candidate pool and we're pleased with the number of candidates we have, please keep in mind that just because we have 30 people in the candidate pool, doesn't mean that one's going to be selected. If one, I've had many times where we've run a selection process and nobody made it to the end. You know, we might get to stage six or seven and nobody passes. And in that case, we start over. We will not compromise a decision or we will not delegate a decision either that is this important. And so I just need to be able to let you know that because hopefully we don't get into that position. But if we do, we need to be able to explain to our public how seriously we take hiring our leaders because we take very seriously the educational environments that their kids experience. And that is of the utmost importance and and the work environment that that teachers come to every day. It's extremely important that we're we're providing that that highest quality environment for kids and for staff. I don't foresee that happening, but it could. And I just need you to know that that when we say we're going to hire the best, most talented people, then we really mean it. And sometimes that gets a little painful, but it the pain is always worth it, let me tell you. So just wanted to make sure that I added that. Dan, from from your perspective, anything that you wanted to add to that?
Just the recruitment process. Janet and Jennifer gave us some good feedback on that. So the way we've done that is I wanted to make sure that so for the the network that Scott and I and our cabinet have, if people have, hey, you know, you should check out what they're doing down in Silver Falls. They that's a one way to come in and meet with us. Like Scott said, we had internal current teachers in the district are able to are going to have their own way of of kind of getting a little bit of that recruitment feel. We've, you know, I think word will get out a little bit on this. And then if people that maybe we don't know are, hey, we hear you're doing great things in Silver Falls, just ask that they send a letter, a resume and a letter of recommendation to us for consideration. Preferably if they know someone within the district that could say, hey, this person's worth spending an hour, a couple hours with. We'll we'll do that. So we're we're off and rolling with that. And and I think that what you talk about, the predictability, Janet, you talked about, you know, I think that that leaders and teachers, you know, that's human beings like predictability. And the more that you can create predictable systems, you will get people wanting to work in your district. And so and that doesn't matter whether you're a principal or a first grader who just likes predictability of their teacher every day. People like predictability. So so that's what we're trying to create.
And at the end of the day, what we want are predictable student outcomes, right? We want high levels of of academic and social emotional growth. And we want those to be predictable because we know that our systems are healthy. And so thank you for allowing me to present that information to you. And if nobody else has a question or comment, thank you.
But I want to echo Scott's, thank you for your, all of your involvement in our and and the work that you're doing from the policy work group to all the groups that Scott mentioned. We're we're definitely putting you to work. Not getting paid anymore, but you're definitely doing the work.
Love every minute of it. I really do.
Okay, well, thank you, guys. Last call, any questions for Scott on the presentation? Okay.
Just so you know, we're 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 going, we're presenting this information to all of our stakeholder groups. So I've presented this to the Silverton High School administrators. Will it present this to our administrator team very soon? I will present it on Teachers Rock and a couple other venues also, so teachers know the process as well. So sorry, Jonathan, just wanted to add that in there.
No, great. Okay. All right, well, that pretty well takes us to the end. We do have other items left on the agenda. That's an opportunity to bring up stuff that's time critical or to mention future agenda topics that you want to just mention. Any any other topics for tonight? Yes, Shelley.
I want to thank Becky Mason of the Ethics Commission for taking the time to be here to train our board on ethical standards of conduct during executive sessions. In my opinion, a review of the ethical standards of conduct was long overdue. I'd like to share my stipulated agreement from the Oregon Government Ethics Commission investigation related to Mr. Shakatop's ethics complaint. His complaint brought to light our practices as a board, as well as the practices of our former administration. In my stipulated agreement from the Ethics Commission, it states, "The respondent, me, had no advanced knowledge of the letters that they were going to be presented at the relevant executive sessions. The letters erroneously described on the agendas as exempt from public inspection were prepared and presented by the district administrators. At both meetings, the respondent, me, objected to the consideration of the letters when presented. In other words, our former administrators led us into a violation by going off topic, falsely claiming their statements were exempt from disclosure and using our executive session to hide and attack, to threaten and berate a board member, me. At no time did the former administrators or the chair responsible for the meeting agenda ever indicate to the board or public that our executive session would be used to air the administrators' grievances about a board member and improper purpose of an executive session. And at no time was I warned by either the administrators or then-board chair Tom Buchholz of the planned confrontation. Instead, I was ambushed. In addition, former SFSD administrators, Mr. Belando and Ms. Stevens, each submitted unsolicited letters to the Ethics Commission defending their actions and the board members' actions. When you read those letters and then read the eight preliminary investigation reports by Ms. Gould and the eight settlement agreements, you realize that neither the OGEC staff nor the commission itself agreed with Mr. Belando or Ms. Stevens. The arguments by Mr. Belando and Ms. Stevens were properly rejected by the Ethics Commission. I hope each of the seven others found violating the executive session rules will join me and the Ethics Commission in recognizing that the former administrators were wrong at the time of the executive sessions and wrong this past summer when they made their baseless claims to the commission. I wish the Ethics Commission had authority to hold the administrators accountable. Nevertheless, even though our then-administrators violated our trust by intentionally leading us into ethics violations, we as a board must be held responsible for any violation of ethic rules that occurs in our meetings because ultimately they are our meetings. In conjunction with the Ethics Commission's findings and this evening's training, as a board, I hope we feel confident, understanding how we violated ethical standards and how to identify and stop potential executive session violations in the future. This includes off-topic, off-agenda discussions, discussions not allowed under the law, making decisions while in executive session, identifying when district retained legal counsel improperly advises us, amongst other topics. Finally, I hope we leave tonight's meeting confident that the board is ready to take full control of its role. The conduct of all of our board meetings ultimately is our responsibility, not our administrators. It is up to those tasked with creating the agenda and ultimately all of us board members to recognize that the agenda is truthful and in compliance with ethical conduct. We are the ones who are accountable to both our constituents and the Oregon Government Ethics Commission.
Okay.
Hey, Jonathan, I'd like to respond.
So given that that was brought up not as a requested agenda item, you know, other other items is not going to, it's not intended to be used as a time to for a single board member to just present whatever's on their mind for is to solicit future agenda items or to, you know, talk about, you know, things that are pertinent board business. And I get that this is at least loosely related. Individual complaints from the Ethics Committee are technically, as she stated earlier, not actually board business, but their individual business. The Tom, I guess where I'm going with this is there wasn't a request to have this on the agenda. So and I didn't know this was coming. So there was no sense that, you know, there was any working with me to get this on the agenda. In fact, when we reviewed the agenda, it wasn't even brought up. So I don't really want to turn this into an opportunity to dig into a bunch of stuff that we weren't really, we haven't agreed as a board to even talk about, I guess, is really what I'm saying. So if somebody makes a
Thank you, Jonathan. I'm going to jump in here. There was only one name that Shelley Nealon mentioned, and it was mine. I had no idea that letter was coming, Shelley. And what proof do you have that I did? And one of the ethical things about running a school board is called board surprise. Knowing that that letter was coming is very surprising. Nobody, you spent a great deal of time preparing that and nobody has has had any time to rebut it or refute or digest it. And I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you, Jonathan.
I'd like to respond.
At this point, I think we're At this point, I think we're off topic, and I think we ought to just see if there's any additional agenda items or things that we need to discuss. I don't think that we're, I think we're delving off into another topic and the board has not agreed as a board to discuss it. So.
I asked it to be on the agenda and I was told that no, it's it's it would be done here. That's what I was told. That it would be done at this work session.
It has to be a motion and a second in order to open up discussion. So that's what Jonathan's talking about.
Right.
Yeah, I I I have asked in an email if we could talk about the ethics settlement at a board meeting as consideration as an agenda item. Do I need to make a motion for that? Or do we, is my statement enough? I
You're welcome to make a motion at this point because I I'm not, we're not entertaining this without board agreement that this is what we want to spend board time talking about.
Okay. I I make a motion that that the consideration of the ethics settlement be considered as an agenda item, not the entire agenda, but certainly an agenda item.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. So anybody have anything that they want to add to this discussion? That hasn't maybe already been said? About whether to discuss these items. Currently, that's really what we're talking about here.
Right.
Well, I I I I had requested this to be on the December ninth agenda and was, um. It was suggested to me to have it be here tonight with the Ethics Commission training. So I agree to that.
So
I I'm not sure I
Okay, thank you. As Jennifer stated, there was a motion made to amend the agenda. So that's, I think, what the issue was. And now the question is, there's been a move, a motion and a second to discuss the settlements of individual board members with O G E C.
In as an agenda item in the future, Jonathan, not not right now. That's all I'm I'm asking that it be considered. And that's what I'd like to clarify.
Okay. So the motion is not to discuss it now because we're already
It's not to discuss it now, no. I I simply would like it to be considered as an agenda item at a board meeting. That that's, I guess I'm a little confused. I thought that's what you were asking. And so
The the Let's recap real quick. If you want an act to be considered per our previous conversations, that goes through Scott. So if you then it's already been considered. If you have a request to go past it, not making it onto the agenda, then you can bring it up as a motion to discuss, which I thought is what was happening tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's not what I meant at all. No, I I was just talking about it would be nice to talk about it in the future, just for transparency or to at least share that information for transparency, but not right now. No. Does that, I'm sorry, I hope I'm not confusing things.
Well, there was a motion to, I I must have misunderstood you to consider it. It's been seconded. We need to proceed with said motion per our previous training on parliamentary procedures. So the motion has been made and seconded. So we can carry on with a vote of that motion if if you would like to know unless
I think we need to discuss, I think that the 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 motion and the second. Yeah, I think we're confused because I think Lori I think she didn't have to make a motion. If she just wanted to say, I'd like this to be considered as an agenda item. I think that the point that Jonathan's trying to make is that has been considered as an agenda item. And so if you want to make a motion for the board to consider it, then you can do so now.
Oh.
I mean, that that's basically what you have done. You have made a motion for the board to consider adding the ethics settlements as an agenda item.
Are you talking about for this meeting, Lori, or for another meeting?
I I'm simply asking it to be considered as an agenda item in the future. Not right now, not right now.
For the future.
For the future, not right now. No.
Okay. So that's the distinction here. She wants it for the future, not right now. That's the distinction.
That because that was, that was the statement, Jonathan, that I understood anyway, that you were, what are the agenda items that you would like to propose? And that's all I'm doing. I'm not asking to delve into it right now. No, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
What I'm hearing is that everything that Lori has suggested didn't need a motion at all. And so really, we're we're kind of right back to, I don't think there is. Well.
Except except that, yeah, yes, she's made a motion. And I'm not sure that there's an understanding that if Lori wants to ensure that that agenda item goes on another agenda, the board has to take action. And therefore you would need said motion.
Right. So you're asking for consideration. I think what you're really asking is to place that item on a future agenda. That's
That's all, that's all I'm asking for consideration. And and I, my my reasoning is just to be transparent. And because it is out there, and I think just for the community and for transparency, to have it on the table. That's all that I'm not talking about tonight at all.
Yeah, okay. So I'm going to I'm going to just wing this because I'm not sure if it's parliamentary or not, but at this point, I'm going to try to see if we can proceed. I think what Lori's asking is for a vote of the board, a mo, she's made a motion to place this on a future agenda. That's I believe what she's really asking for.
And I believe that is being managed anyway. There's already a a group that does that. I I mean, I don't want to step on any toes that are in place. It's just, I know that there's already a mechanism for that consideration. And all I want to do is support
Right.
That that, but but not, not to upset the apple cart, but not to upset
I think we're going in a circle because what what's happened is it's been requested, it wasn't on the agenda. To ask to have it considered again is somewhat redundant. So I think what you're asking is for it to be, not to be considered, but to be on an agenda. Am I mistaken?
Boy, that's, that's, I I would like it to be in the future. Yes. But I know it's up to the board, but and I know, but I also know it it just may not be considered at all. I understand that. I know that I can only ask.
Yes, thank you. And I'm trying to move us, I'm trying to get us to a point where we can move forward. So I'm interpreting your request, your motion as being, and I'm going to just restate it. You would like it to be that this item to be on a future agenda. And I
Yes.
I'm going to just assume that that motion has been remade for clarity's sake. Does anybody have a second on that? Because that's, I think, how we need to proceed at this point.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded to have this particular item on a future agenda. Any further discussion about? Okay, Debbie, would you please, oh, Tom, go ahead.
I I'll just be quick. I don't, I I'll be voting no on it. It's this is two, this is two superintendents ago. We're just digging up old wounds. Everybody seems to know everybody's feelings on this topic. I I think we need to move on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
I would agree that I think that I trust our Office of the Superintendent and we have made a commitment not to have executive sessions, and we haven't had any executive sessions since since Scott was, it became the leader of the ship. And people can can look up the settlements there for individual board members, not as a group. And, you know, I I want to, there's somebody wrote in the paper our town not too long ago, that they were super impressed with our Office of the Superintendent and hope we can move forward, drive ahead instead of looking in the rearview mirror. And and I think that that is the spirit in which I will be voting no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question for Lori?
Yeah.
Just to, just in terms of clarification. Is there something specific around that issue that you'd like to talk about or that you would like to talk about when it's on the agenda? Or are you just thinking we just need to have a general discussion? So for transparency's sake, I I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're going for and what I'm going on.
It was simply for transparency's sake, not not for any other reason. Yeah, just simply for transparency. And I I don't really even think it would need, and like I said, it can be just minimal and say, this is what occurred. Boom, and just be done. But yeah, I'm not talking about anything in depth. I just think for transparency, that's, that's my whole purpose.
Thank you.
That's all.
Any any additional new information to discuss before we bring this over? Yes, sir.
Well, I was just going to piggyback on what Jennifer said. There's a lot of talk about transparency. There's a lot of talk about what is out ahead of us. And if you look out the front windshield, it's much more clear than looking in the rearview mirror. I am sick and tired of listening to the previous administration. We're never going to heal. We're never going to move forward unless we stop talking about previous administration. We need to look out their front windshield and be focused.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
So I I'm going to, you know, ahead of the vote, I guess I'll share my two cents as well. I think Jennifer summarized my position pretty accurately. I think that I I don't see any value in looking back two administrations ago, we are we've made a fantastic hire. Scott's doing a great job. I see us moving forward. We are learning a lot. We've made a lot of changes in how business is being done in the district, certainly at the board level and at the administration's level. So I I intend to vote no. I don't think it's particularly relevant board business, and I don't think it has much to do with trying to figure out how to manage all of our current crises, many of which are, have been discussed earlier tonight.
Okay.
So I think we've all had a chance to speak at this point. So unless there's any new information. There, Shelley, is there?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to say, um, you know, I would love to look through that front windshield. And I would love to have a brand new non-crocked windshield. It didn't happen to you, Irv. It didn't happen to any of you. I would love to move forward. But when, you know what, when you can't clean up and hold yourself accountable as a public official on a board to your constituents and to your community, that there was some serious horrible behavior that happened. And I have received zero response from any of those board members who were involved or who were there. It was destructive for me. It was horrible.
Right. So Shelley, I hate to interrupt, but we are now
You know what? No, you can't interrupt me. You can't. No, because we're discussing it. Before we take a vote, Jonathan, no.
Talking about the topic is what you're doing. So I I'm going to ask that we have a vote to decide whether we are going to entertain the talk. Thank you. Debbie, would you please take the vote?
Yes. Jonathan?
I vote no.
Jennifer?
No.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Irv?
No.
Four nays, three yays, the motion fails.
Right. We still are on item five. Other topics, are there any other topics that we need to discuss tonight? Yes, Jennifer.
I just want to say that, you know, if if Shelley feels like she needs acknowledgement, I'm willing to do that right now. Shelley, I feel really badly that what happened, happened. And if I could do it all over again, I would do it differently. And I just want to say that I think that you were wronged and and I want to acknowledge that. And I think that yeah, I just want to, I want to do that right now. I acknowledge that there were, there was wrongdoing and I regret inaction, like like we just had in our, in our, our training. She said inaction is inaction and and I and I regret that. So I just wanted to say that to you in this group.
Jennifer, I really, really appreciate that. That that goes a long way, and that shows to me that you are a professional ethical person and you recognize what happened. So I really do appreciate that. And I really have been enjoying working with you the past few months with our new superintendent. And I think we're doing great things. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay. I think that unless anybody else has anything else, we are ready to adjourn tonight. Anything else before we close? Right. Objection meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.